Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this April 20th regular meeting of the Zion City Council to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Here.
Commissioner Frierson?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Mayor McKinney?
Here. Before going to the Pledge of Allegiance, I'm going to read the disclaimer for future city council meetings. While the city council meeting is open to the public and public comments are welcomed, in light of concerns related to the spread of the coronavirus, the meetings will be streamlined live and online and can be found on the Zoom link that is posted on our city website. And the city very strongly encourages residents and participants to submit written comments to the city clerk prior to the meeting if they wish to participate at the meeting. Persons will be allowed to make in-person comments if they desire to do so in accordance and as limited by the city code. However, individuals will be brought into the meeting room one at a time and all federal, state, and local protocols currently in place to alleviate the spread of COVID-19, including social distancing requirements, including the wearing of masks will be observed. Again, the city welcomes and encourages your participation in accordance with and as limited by the city code in this process, and thanks you in advance for your interest in the city's finances and affairs. Thank you for your understanding for this temporary change in procedure for the health, safety, and welfare of our residents. Item number three, Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance.
To the flag.
Ninety-nine states of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice. Commissioner McDowell, would you care to lead us in prayer this evening?
Sure. Part of the prayer this evening is going to be a reading from scripture, and it is a prayer. With what shall I come before the Lord and bow down before the exalted God? Shall I come before him with burnt offerings, with calves a year old? Will the Lord be pleased with thousands of rams, with ten thousand rivers of oil? Shall I offer my firstborn for my transgressions, the fruit of my body for the sin of my soul? He has shown you, oh man, what is good, and what does the Lord require of you? To act justly and to love mercy and to walk humbly before your God. Lord, that's our prayer tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Item number four, agenda changes. Do any of the commissioners have any agenda changes for the evening? If not, is there a motion to present agenda as presented?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Hi.
Commissioner Frierson? Commissioner McDowell?
Hi.
Commissioner Fisher?
Hi.
Mayor McKinney?
I. Item number five, the citizens' comments. We appreciate everyone that makes citizen comments tonight. All comments will be limited to three minutes. Under the Open Meetings Act, there is no requirement that a response to a public comment be given, but in the unusual circumstances, a response is merited. One will be provided. The city has a general policy to not comment on employment litigation or other related issues. Are there any citizens' comments this evening that were written in or anyone in the waiting room that would like to make a citizen comment?
If anyone would like to make a comment, just in the reactions part on the Zoom call, you can raise your hand and we will call him.
Going what?
Denise Lear has her hand up.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Hello? Miss Lear.
All right, thank you very much. Mayor McKinney, City Council, thank you very much. A couple of things. In light of the recent decision today in Minneapolis, I'd like to thank our police chief, Chief Barton. Officer Vaughn did finally reach out to my sister, and I'd like to thank him for that. He reached out today. And I'd also like to thank Officer Taylor, a young man who came to my home the other day and assisted me with something, and I'd like to thank him for that. I'd also like to thank the city for, right here at Eighteenth and Lewis, for the removal of the trash and the debris and cutting down. So it looks very nice over here now, Mayor, and I'd like to thank you guys for that. It looks very nice. Also, I've noticed the landlords in this area have had been picking up more, and it looks nice over here, too. My other concern is, we wanted to know about recycling for tires and paint this summer. Are we going to have a facility to do that? And my last, and I think my most important thing is, we were blessed, I'm not saying blessed, but last summer, the kids, due to the pandemic, weren't able to attend summer school, weren't able basically to go outside due to the isolation and everything. But this summer, with school being closed for summer, we're going to catch it this summer. We need to do something with these children this summer. The Park District, I understand, they have a program, but it said $165 a week, which some families cannot afford. If we don't get together as a school board, as a city, and this Park District can do something with these kids, the city's going to recap it this summer. We're going to have havoc. So thank you, Mayor, and City Council for that.
All right, thank you, Ms. Lear. Any other citizen comments that we have for the evening?
If I could just interject real quick on Ms. Lear's comment, August 7th, we're going to have a city cleanup day that will include tires and electronics, not hazardous materials. We are in the process of working on a potential option with advanced disposal. Director Iyansin, Director Roberts, and myself, as well as Building Inspector Serrano met with them. We're hoping to have more information. Nothing guaranteed yet. We'll be discussing it before council. But August 7th will be for tires and electronics. Stay tuned on Facebook. We'll announce it more in council meetings as we get closer as well.
Thank you, Administrator Nabel. Any other comments? Item number six, consent agenda.
Approval of minutes of a regular meeting held on April 6, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Approval but not release of closed session minutes of a meeting held on April 6, 2021 at 8:06 PM.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Hi.
Commissioner Frierson?
Hi.
Commissioner McDowell?
Hi.
Commissioner Fisher? Commissioner Fisher?
Hi.
Mayor McKinney?
Hi.
Bills vouchers 137224 through 137305 drawn on Huntington National Bank, total $198,349.20.
Is there a motion to approve the bills?
I'll move to approve the bills. Second.
Comments or discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Hi.
Commissioner Frierson?
Hi.
Commissioner McDowell?
Hi.
Commissioner Fisher?
Hi.
Mayor McKinney?
I. Item number seven, consider passing resolution as follows. 7A authorizing the execution of a website maintenance agreement between the city of Zion and GoFlow.com per Administrator Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. You have before you the contract for GoFlow for our annual website maintenance. We've utilized them for multiple years now, and the fee has actually not increased during that time. I did an analysis of the hourly rate for these general services on an annual basis a couple of years ago, and it was in the $50 to $70 range, which was very reasonable for a website maintenance, and that did not take into consideration any special projects, even though the contract says you will not charge, that the scope for special projects is not part of this. He has never charged us for that. He's taken those, Chris Simansky from GoFlow has taken those on, including the website redesign probably six or seven years ago, when we went online for bill pay and all the coding and changes with that, and basically any additional requests we make of him. So it's not a guarantee, but he has covered those under his contract in the past. So I would recommend approval or renewal of the contract with GoFlow for fiscal year '22 as presented.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Questions or discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Hi.
Commissioner Frierson?
Hi.
Commissioner McDowell?
Hi.
Commissioner Fisher?
Hi.
Mayor McKinney?
Hi. Item number eight, discussion authorization and approval. 8A is tabulation of bids petroleum, oil, and lubricants, POL per Director Roberts, and the 2021 asphalt and aggregates.
Can I have their?
Is there a?
Sorry about that. I couldn't get unmuted.
Thanks, Director Robert. I was getting ready to fill in for you, but I think you do this better.
Um. The bid opening for the annual 2021 petroleum, oil, and lubricants and the 2021 asphalt aggregates were held April 1st, 2021. Attached are the tabulation bid results. Staff is requesting the council approve and accept the lowest responsible bidders for these materials as presented in the attached exhibit table for the fiscal year '22. Bid results will be on file in the clerk's office and also within Public Works.
Is there a motion to approve the tabulation of bids?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Hi.
Commissioner Frierson?
Hi.
Commissioner McDowell?
Hi.
Commissioner Fisher?
Hi.
Mayor McKinney?
I. Item number eight B, considerable approval of payment for emergency equipment repair per Director Roberts.
Thank you, Robert Mael. During the February 22nd snow event, a 2003 International Truck number 106 experienced an engine failure requiring replacement. Additionally, a 2004 International Truck number 161 lost a hydraulic lift cylinder which failed, requiring replacement. This reduced our fleet from three canons to one. The lead time for hydraulic lift cylinder is four to five months. With the possibility of winter weather, staff decided to proceed with emergency repair, replacing the engine for truck number 106. Staff recommends and request payment of the attached invoice for the emergency repairs from the Lakeside International LLC for $15,111.85.
Is there a motion to approve the payment for emergency equipment repair?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or discussion?
I had a question. Is this something that would be budgeted for? I should know that, but I don't.
No, ma'am, it was not. We have repair parts budgeted within the system. However, this exceeds that amount.
Okay.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Hi.
Commissioner Frierson?
Hi.
Commissioner McDowell?
Hi.
Commissioner Fisher?
Hi.
Mayor McKinney?
I. Item number eight C, request permission to accept proposal for renewal of cyber insurance per Administrator Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. At the last meeting, we renewed various lines of insurance, liability auto, our umbrella policy. However, we did not have the quotes back on our cyber protection insurance at that point. We since then received it, and the best quote received was a renewal at $11,426 annually. That's an increase of $4,400 from the prior year. Assurance wanted to let everyone know, however, that that is nothing that Zion did or did not do. The market is, has changed significantly. Some carriers have dropped out of cyber insurance completely. And with cyber risks on the rise, it seems almost every day you hear somebody getting hacked or some municipality or business being a victim of that. This will help protect us against those types of attacks. The premiums have just gone through the roof. That being said, I do think it's necessary that we renew at this rate to protect us. Remember, we did have a significant savings on our other insurance lines, so we'll still overall come in at a reduced insurance premium compared to the current year when you look at the package as a whole. So I would recommend approval of the renewal or approval of the insurance proposal with Beasley as presented.
Is there a motion to accept the proposal?
I'll move to accept the proposal.
Second.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Hi.
Commissioner Frierson? Commissioner McDowell?
Hi.
Commissioner Fisher?
Hi.
Mayor McKinney?
I. Item number nine, departmental commentary, starting off with Director Iyansin. Item number nine, departmental commentary, starting off with Director Iyansin. Is Director Iyansin in the house this evening?
He is, but he's muted, maybe having some difficulties. Let's circle back.
Okay.
There you go. I think he's.
About now.
There you go.
Okay. I just wanted to make a comment. We are making some progress on getting some of the properties and neighborhoods cleaned up. Where they ask all residents of property owners to take a few minutes a day to just clean up around the properties to help keep the community clean. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Director Iyansin, Director Roberts.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to update the citizens with, I attended a pre-con, pre-construction meeting with IDOT on Sheridan Road. The ADA ramp replacements is underway, and also the 26th of April, IDOT will be resurfacing Sheridan Road from State Line to Greenwood Avenue. They're starting from the north, so I would assume they'll be within the city of Zion, probably within a month.
That's terrific news. Terrific news. Director Roberts, I have a question for you. Ms. Lear mentioned about removal of hazardous materials. And I think either Director Iyansin or Director Roberts can answer the question. How do our residents go about learning how and where to dispose of hazardous materials? Is that on the, excuse me, the advanced disposal website?
I believe it's advanced waste management now has it on our website. We also have a link to Swalco on the Public Works website. They're the only ones right now that will remove hazardous waste. Some of the waste waste management will pick up, but it's not a lot of that type. Swalco will take it off.
So if our people, if our residents will just go to our website, they can pick up that information on who to call and how to get rid of it, or go to Swalco's website?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. Administrator Nabel?
Thank you. I'm just going to echo a comment I had last month or last meeting, but since we're really creeping up on the end of April here quickly, just know that vehicle licenses, vehicle stickers expire at the end of this month. Everyone should have received an application with their most recent water bill over the past three months, showing the form that they could fill out and send back in, and then we mail out, we record, mail out the sticker. Additionally, you can download the form on our website. We are making appointments for anyone who is handicapped, seniors, or active military to be able to renew those in person, since there is additional proof documentation required for the discounts. So contact City Hall if you need to set something like that up, but those do expire at the end of this month, so please renew that as soon as possible. It is for a two-year term, so you'll be covered for the next two years. I'm also going to put the Swalco link in our chat for anyone who's interested.
Great. Administrator Nabel, thank you for that, and I was going to ask you a question, but it flew the coop. So I'll come back to you later on that one. Chief Street?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. Just a couple of quick things. One is another reminder, the Blood Drive we're hosting in conjunction with Red Cross on May 2nd. You can check our Facebook page for the flyer on that, and we'll repost it a couple of times before then. The second thing is just a quick thank you to some of the staff at the township, Sherry and Adriana and Kim. We're making some pretty good headway with visiting some callers that we see with somewhat regularity. We have a partnership with the township now to send a representative over just to make sure that they're getting the care and the potential resources that they need, so hopefully they don't need to keep calling us. So the township has been a great partner so far, and we hope to continue that. Otherwise, we hope to see you May 2nd at our Blood Drive, and have a good evening.
Chief Street, that Blood Drive starts at what time and ends at what time?
I should have the flyer in front of me, but I believe it's 11:00.
Okay.
11:00 or 12:00, and I'll reemail to the department heads and you, and we'll post it again on our fire department Facebook page later tonight.
And we'll post that on our city website as well through our website.
Mayor, it's actually 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM.
Thank you.
That was close. That was close. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Frierson. Chief Barton?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I wanted to talk a little bit tonight about the news of the George Floyd verdict. This is way heavy on a lot of people's hearts and minds. And I think what we saw here was a trial of a bad apple, a bad seed, and now a reflection of our law enforcement community in general. We will support, the police department will support and defend the First Amendment right to peaceful protest. I ask the members of this community that if they choose to protest or exercise their First Amendment rights, whether it's here or within another community, that they do it peacefully and respectful of others. We cannot and will not condone criminal behavior, destruction of property, or violence towards others. We with this verdict delivered today, I thought about the men and women that I work with. I have discussed with them in previous a number of times that how this bad behavior has no home here in our community or in our police department. And I can say this, I'm proud of the people that I work with, with the high level of professionalism that I see on a day-to-day basis, and I thank them for that. Thank you, Commissioners and Mayor, for your support. This has been a, you know, a difficult time for our community, neighboring communities, and our country. And I just appreciate the support that you guys have offered. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Barton, for the words, kind of a, if we could say, the start of a healing moment this evening when the verdict came in, that justice for all, which is in our Pledge of Allegiance, really meant something tonight. So thank you for the work that you and your staff, our first responders, and all our city employees do within the city. Do any of the commissioners have any comments they would like to make?
Mayor? Just a general reminder for everyone. Vaccinations are rolling out for COVID-19. I was fortunate enough to get my first vaccination today, and, but we still have a responsibility to protect others. So we're getting closer to the end, but you still need to wear your mask, especially if you're in public places, until we get everybody vaccinated and get the virus under control. So that's the only thing I would add for tonight.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Fisher. Are there any other comments from the commissioners?
I too.
The only thing I had is a push for people to sign up for Blackboard. That's an investment that the city made recently, and it's a really good communication vehicle. You know, as far as mentioning whether or not CTC is hosting vaccine shots or any other testing, it's a great way for us to get out, you know, get word out, and we need people to continue to sign up, so I'll continue to advocate for that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Frierson. I just, I just wanted to add that I too got my first vaccination today at Cancer Treatment Center, and just gauging and speaking to several people. They were very appreciative as to, you know, being able to get that, have that service in our community. And yeah, again, they were very appreciative.
Thank you, Commissioner Holmes. Commissioner McDowell, any comments?
None tonight, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I'll just make a couple, just echoing the sentiments of Commissioner Frierson about the Blackboard Connect. We've sent out several messages over the past several weeks on Blackboard about the vaccine being available at the Cancer Treatment Center, and we have received an overwhelming response from people, which has been absolutely terrific. We've been working with the Cancer Treatment Center for the past several months to make sure that our residents and residents in the surrounding communities get vaccinated. And last week, they announced that they opened up April 20th, which we filled all but 40 spots. And they have opened up a couple more dates, April 26th, Monday, and April 27th, vaccine appointments can be made. We're going to provide a link on our webpage. Commissioner McDowell had already provided that on Facebook. I believe on a couple of the community forums, we will repost that information. But also, we have a COVID line here at the City Hall that you can call if you want to get registered for the vaccine. 847-746-4013. Again, that number is 847-746-4013. We have volunteers that are monitoring that number, that put together a callback list, and we have probably called back and talked to probably over 1,500 people to get them signed up thus far. I am also using my line as a way to sign up, as I do have the signup sheet. So people can feel free to call my office as well, 847-746-4011. Again, 847-746-4011. Our commitment, I can't say enough about the cancer treatment and their being such a great corporate partner for us and offering these two days for our residents in Zion, but we also are serving residents from Beach Park, Wadsworth, North Chicago, Walt Keegan, Gurnee. We've had people from other areas that have come in, and what's been great is the response that we've been getting, the callbacks that we've gotten from people to say what a great experience it was to be in Zion and how professionally everything was held, and what a beautiful city we have. So we'll continue to have those, extend those dates as the Cancer Treatment Center gets vaccines. We'll extend the dates past April 26th and 27th. But please take advantage of this. Call us, our volunteers. I can't thank our volunteers enough that have worked so hard to monitor the line and call people back. It's been a great community effort. It reflects so well on our city, and people are so appreciative of having the opportunity to come here and get vaccinated. So thanks to all of our volunteers. I know they work on this during the day. They work on it at night, as I've done, and my partner Lisa, and it's just a great service to perform for members in our community. I just also want to update people that we've continued to have discussion with our Congressman Brad Snyder and our Senator Tammy Duckworth about this spent nuclear fuel rods that are on our lakefront and that we are trying to get compensation for. We met with them about a week ago after our last city council meeting and had the opportunity, now that the new administration is in, to continue to push to get compensation for being a for being a repository of storage facility for spent fuel rods. So while that's been an ongoing issue for so many years, we continue to work hard behind the scenes with our state and our federal representation to make sure that we at some point get the money that is owed to us for, under the Nuclear Waste Act of 1982. Ms. Lear also mentioned something about kids. And while that isn't a typical function of the city itself, I last, this week, just yesterday, I met with two gentlemen, Brandon Rogers, who is a coach over at the high school, and Ronel, Ronel Showell, who was also, works with Mountain Zion Missionary Baptist Church. That is, they're putting a program together for kids for computer literacy, literacy. And I'm also meeting with the head basketball coach tomorrow, Bobby Worthington, to talk about their involvement and what we need to do as a collective community to keep our kids busy, educated and moving forward and preparing for life. So we are tackling those issues and reaching out to the right people. Ms. Lear, I think it would be helpful, even if you join some of those conversations with the people that I've mentioned, you know them as well as I do, that we are trying to do something, understanding that all of our residents, even our kids, that have been under this incredible pressure and stress of being sheltered in place during the pandemic, needs some relief that is healthy for all of us. So let's continue to have patience. We're seeing some light at the end of the tunnel with the vaccine being rolled out and let's continue to be supportive and loving of each other as we continue to fight this pandemic together. Item number 10 is announcements on April 22nd. Another initiative that I just posted online today, it's Earth Day. That's being a collaborative effort by the Lake County Department of Transportation, Zion Park District, City of Zion, Zion Coalition for Healthy Communities. There's a cleanup along the Robert McClory Bike Trail that's just runs along Galilee and it runs between all of the communities on the North Shore. So people come out on the 10th so that we can clean up the bike trail. There'll be t-shirts and things given away. There'll be a tree planting starting at 10, 10 o'clock. And I believe Commissioner Ferguson, if I'm right, that starts at 10 o'clock at 23rd Street where everyone will gather for that. But this is one of those initiatives too, that we've been working on behind the scene. So many of our residents and people from other communities walk that bike trail, their dogs themselves, ride their bikes. Over the past couple of years, I've worked with the park district and the county to put, get garbage cans placed along the trail in different areas. We'd like our residents and people that come through the, to use those garbage receptacles for litter to cut down on the litter. So we're going to start this year with the clean, excuse me, spring cleanup of that area on April 22nd on Earth Day. So we want as many residents to come out that use that trail and, and support us in this effort. Also, one of the glaring items that sometimes left on the bike trail in the walking path is dog excrement. So we ask our citizens and people that have dogs in this community to be responsible dog owners and, and please clean up after your pets when you're in that area. It's a safety hazard for people and pets and the kids that play in, on, along the parkway and that are on the bike path. And it's also a violation of one of our city codes to not clean up after your dog. Item number two from announcements, again, on April 26th and 27th, there will be more shots available through the Cancer Research Center. Again, use the numbers that we provided and that were in the chat to call those numbers and the link to sign up to register yourself or call one of our volunteers and, and get registered to get your COVID vaccine shot at the Cancer Treatment Center in Zion. Last item for announcements is May 4th at 6 o'clock, there's a Zion Township Board meeting.
Excuse me, Mayor, there is no meeting on May 4th for the township.
Okay. Okay.
Just City Council.
X-nay on the eating May. That was on the, that was piglet for anybody. I'm fluent in a couple of languages. There's no Township Board meeting on May 4th. That was a misprint on the, on the agenda. So just showing you, I can read, I do read it and I should have caught it. And at 7 o'clock on May 4th, there is a Zion City Council meeting. With that said, item number 11, closed session pursuant to 5 ILCS, 120 dash 2 open meetings for the discussion of file pending and or probable or imminent litigation, collective bargaining and personnel. Is there a motion to go into a closed session?
I'll move.
Second, we have a first and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item number 12, consider approval of agreement between the IUOE Local 150 Public Employee Division Union for Clerical Employees and the City of Zion per Administrator Enable.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. You have before you the results of negotiations with the clerical union branch of Local 150 and I would recommend approval of the contract covering May 1st, 2021 through April 30th, 2024 as presented.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item number 13, consider approval of agreement between IUOE Local 150 Public Employee Division Union for Public Works Employees in the City of Zion per Administrator Enable.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. We were hoping to have this contract ready for negotiations as well. We do have a contract, however, we did not have time to have a legal review and final review of the contract before the meeting. So I would respectfully request that this be tabled to the, the May 4th council meeting.
Is there a motion to table this into the May 4th, the council meeting?
I'll make that motion to table till the May 4th, City Council meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item number 14, consider approval of changes in non-union employee concessions and lower salary increases per Administrator Enable.
Thank you again, Mayor Commissioners. Starting in May 1st of 2018, to help with budget issues, non-union city employees contributed more towards their insurance contributions. It was intended to be a temporary concession, but we're not out of the woods on the financial aspect. I would ask that you consider removing those additional insurance concessions. However, we would be freezing current salaries as long as it's not under contractual agreement with any, any employees. We would consider freezing current non-union salaries for the next fiscal year at their current levels.
Is there a motion to approve the changes in the non-union employee concessions?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item number 15, consider resolution for dismissal of employee B per Administrator Enable.
Thank you. My last one, I promise. We, you have before you a resolution for involuntary termination for employee listed in the resolution and I would recommend approval of the resolution as presented.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Item number 16, is there a motion to adjourn?
I moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, everybody drive safely.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Again, everybody drive safely.
Have a good night, everyone.
Good night.
Night.